Right, and as far as, I remember a few months back, the attorney, Ms. Dixon, read us a statement on why we shouldn't put these out for bid. And, okay, I understand, you know, but two months ago, something went out for bid. And, again, I don't remember, I don't know if we took the lowest bid or the second lowest bid, whatever. Either we go out for bid or we don't. So, if we can go out for bid on the list that we have, well, I'm of the feeling we go out for bid. If we go from this list, if we can do that, I know when I had my business, I always bid everything. So, now I'm a little confused on, we can or we can't. I thought we were clear that we can't, but a couple of months ago, there was a project that went out, and it was, there was a bid, or, not a bid, but a request for proposal. So, I don't know if there's a difference, a legal thing, I don't know, I'm not an attorney, but I like clarification, and I'd like to see what last couple of years.
Ms. Bond?
Sorry. That scared me. Scared me.
Yes, I can understand.
She looks nothing like one. Pat's heart just turned over in Mexico. Tonight. Yeah, really. There are some things pursuant to law that must be bid. There are some things that you send out for proposals on, and then you can create a list of certain professionals, and from that list of approved professionals, you select the person or entity that you want to do the job. And, I'm not sure which one you're referring to was bid last time, but, for example, construction work was bid in accordance with Illinois bid rules, and that was just before you, a moment ago. Professionals who are on an approved list of professionals qualified by the city, you can select from, and you actually don't take that to bid, you select from your approved list of qualified professionals. If you'd like, I can give to the members of the council a little sheet that would outline for you when you go to bid and when you select from your list, if that would make you more comfortable in future.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Mr. Wesley.
I apologize to council for asking this question, but for taking a timeout on this. Dave, I have a question for you. We have a list of sixteen engineer firms. How do you determine which one to pick, and we're getting the biggest bang for our buck?
Well, just for the council's information, I do take great pains to rotate the work between the firms. I definitely have not favored anyone firm in my selection. I would point out, most of the other Baxter and Woodman projects on there were our public, from our Public Works Department, and maybe you can fault us for not coordinating our efforts well enough, but I wasn't really in the loop on a lot of those contracts, I wasn't aware that they were ongoing. So, for any of my jobs, which generally include the roadway jobs and some of the water main jobs, I had not used Baxter and Woodman at all. So, being one of our firms that we've worked with in the past, we have good standing with, and we know that can do this kind of work, I felt appropriate to choose them for this Other factors as well, a job of this size, a $2 million roadway reconstruction, I'm pretty reluctant to give it to one of the, maybe one of the new firms that we've added, or one of the firms that haven't done a project of that size in town before. I don't want to test their qualifications on a job that size, I would rather give it to a smaller firm. So, again, those are some of the factors that I use. If you look in my other information memo that I sent, where I kind of discuss where we, where staff has placed some of these firms traditionally, and the kind of work that we use them for, and I hope that clarifies a little bit how, in our mind, we see some of these firms having more expertise in certain areas than in others. They're all, they all provide full-service engineering, so if you ask any of them, certainly they'll say they can do anything, and I'm not saying they wouldn't do a good job, but we rely on a lot of our experience in working with them for who we choose for what. And, again, a job for this size, we really were only going to consider, you know, some of the, some of the top firms on our list that had done some things for us in the past, and we had a good working relationship with. So, that was kind of the thinking that went into that. It's, you know, there could be a lot of factors that go into it, and different projects, again, different firms are better suited for it. I thought this was, particular one was a good, good fit for Baxter and Woodman, and that's why I selected them.
Alderman Wesley.
That was pretty good, but I don't think you answered my question. How do you know we're getting the biggest bang for our buck?
Are you talking about price-wise or quality of work?
Give me both.
Because, price-wise, again, we don't, we select the firm, and then we negotiate the fee with them. So, we don't do price competition for professional services. Quality of work, we go with our, you know, past experiences in working with them.
Is Baxter and Woodman the only company that size that could do this job that's on our list?
No, they could all do the job.
Okay.
Alderman, please.
Something that Dave just said, negotiate, I think I brought it up last week, do we go back to Baxter and Woodman and say, you know, we were budgeted at $100,000, it came in at 131, I really didn't get a clear answer. Me personally, when I'm negotiating a contract, you know, my nickname was the hammer, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna make you, give me the right price. That's the way it was on the produce market when I used to go down every day, bottom line. I really didn't, I don't think we got a straight answer, that, did we ask them, hey, you know, we're budgeting $100,000? I think the representative there had said, well, you know, kind of wishy-washy, but didn't sound like he was even approached. So, are we approaching or not? I like to know if we, that we are. You know, I think Alderman Lewitin made a comment when SEC was here, with their percentage, I believe it went down slightly, but he asked, he's the alderman, I want to make sure that staff is asking. That's all.
Alderman Wesley.
So, Mayor, one follow-up with, so, when you got the proposal from Baxter and Woods, was that the only proposal he gave us for 131,000?
Correct.
Did you go back and ask him, did you go back and tell him that this was our budget, are you willing to come down to our budget? Did you?
No, I did not, and if I can just explain a little bit, on some of our design projects, and many of our design projects, I have gotten lower fees, I have gone through their scope of work, and I have asked them to remove items that I didn't think were necessary, and that we've ended up with a lower fee. For construction management such as this, where the fee is really tied in with just an estimate of hours, that someone's going to be out there, I just feel there's a lot less flexibility in terms of taking away from that. Obviously, they can do it, they can say, here's the dollar amount, that equates to a certain number of hours, when we reach that amount, we can pull the person out of the job. I mean, I don't think they're going to be willing to just eat the cost on something like that. So, for a construction project like this, which is based on the hours of someone being out there, there very often wouldn't be much flexibility. I didn't see any in their proposal, I didn't see, I didn't see any, any room in there that they could reduce that fee, so I did not ask them to do that.
Mayor, could I do one follow-up?
Alderman Wesley.
I understand the contract states that they will be out there every time there's a construction company out there, their contract states that, am I correct?
Correct, that's what their orders are.
So, needless to say, this project is in my ward. So, if I go out there, and Baxter and Woods is not out there, and I can't find them, how do we go after them that they didn't fulfill their contract? Mary, let me ask you this question. If the contract states that they must be out there every time there's a truck out there doing this construction, and they abandoned to go to some other job to look at it, to another town, and this is every contractor, and they aren't there, how do we then prove that they abandoned the job to go to another site to look at another project? Say, I task has got the project going on, and they got, they splitting this guy up that gotta go there, or Joe Smol, the next engineer, got another job in X area. So, how do we hold them accountable that they are out there every, every time? Because I will guarantee you, I will be out there several times to make sure our engineer's out there. So, my question to you, Mary, do they violate the contract if they aren't out there?
Unfortunately, I don't have the contract in front of me to know specifically what their contractual obligations are, but certainly, if the contractual obligation they have is to be on-site 24/7, or a specific time of day or time during the project, and they're not, they would be in breach of the contract. But, I don't know that the contract, I don't know if the contract requires 100% presence for every time the project is being undertaken, or if it's spot checking to ensure that the contract is being, or the work is being completed pursuant to underlying contract.
Well, according to him that stood up here last, last Thursday, that he will be out, or one other firm will be out there 24/7. Again, let me back up here then. Are we signing contracts without the legal councils reviewing contracts?
Our legal council reviewed our standard format for professional services agreement, and we always use that, if there's any changes to that, we will forward that on to our attorney to review that. If they don't make any changes to it, then we usually do not send it to them.
And I have to say, Alderman Wesley, just because I personally did not see this particular contract, doesn't mean that someone else with my firm did not, Mr. Bond may have reviewed it, I don't know.
Did our, did our, did we send the copy to our legal opinion, our legal counseling for approval, make sure everything was legit on that contract? Did we do that?
No, I don't believe that, I don't believe there's been any exceptions taken to our standard agreement on this one, and plus, we aren't, we wouldn't process it until it was approved by council, anyway.
I have a hard time now, Mayor, approving any contracts unless our legal opinion looks at these contracts, because that means Joe, anyone could sign a contract with these firms, and not, and there could be something in that contract that doesn't make sense, but our legal council approve it.
If it's our form agreement, we wouldn't want to send that to the attorney each and every time and run up the legal bills. It's like a lease where you're just changing the address or the price of the monthly rental.
That's fine.
If the form is approved, I think we're good. Alderman Caddella?
I just kind of want to remind everybody here, this is something I'd note, something about, construction management. Construction management and site supervision are not always necessarily the same thing. So, I didn't see this contract, there was no reason for me to, or any of us to have seen this contract, except for our attorney. But unless it said site supervision 40 hours a week, perhaps it just said dedication of 40 hours a week for construction management, I certainly wouldn't expect to find a Baxter and Woodman representative out there eight hours a day, five days a week. I'm a construction manager, and when I'm on a large job, you may find me out there eight hours a day, you may find me out there 16 hours a day, you may find me out there two hours a day, and stuck in a trailer somewhere near the site, or at the office. I mean, you know, construction, if it's a construction management contract, it, it may stipulate specific hours of site supervision, but really, site supervision, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, should be handled by the, by the general contractor. Construction management is somewhat of a different animal, it's, it's quality control, scheduling, and, and being a middleman, and reporting into, to you.
They're not managing the project in the same, in the same way that the general contractor's going to be managing the project. They're out there doing inspection and protecting the city's interests, I mean, there is a difference there.
Alderman Winger.
Just a comment on the request about the background of all of the different engineers we've used in the past two years, and is that something that can be done independently? I don't want to get all this paper of lists in the past couple of years, I don't feel I need that. I don't know how many people are looking for this, so, maybe some of that can be one-on-one?
No, we can't do that.
With, directly with Mr. Graff? I don't know.
Well, pursuant to our policy, when Alderman makes a request, everybody gets the documentation, so.
Okay, so.
I'm not raising a hand, no.
But this is committee work, this is not council work, so, I think staff is going to put that together, and it would come up at the next Public Works Committee.
Well, then, does it take a long time to do? I don't want valuable time spent on something that we may not even need, like, what kind of hours is that?
I don't know, it could take a while, and also, it's not just me, there've been a lot of Public Works contracts as well, so we'll have to, you know, coordinate our efforts on that. But, two years shouldn't be too bad, that's not such a big timeframe.
Well, like, how long, how many hours would that take? Staff hours?
I'm going to estimate, maybe four.
And, and why do we want this?
Alderman Wesley.
Because I just want to make sure we play on a playing field with every contractor that's on our list, that they get some work. The problem is, we, we ran into a problem with Baxter and Woods, that we awarded contract to everything, and all of a sudden, he started doing slop work, and all of that other stuff. If you hire a contractor in your house, do you not go out for bid and see who's the best price?
Occasionally, you look at that, but I would expect that there will be a firm in place that is doing a good job, there's no perfect formula to know if you're getting that optimal value sort of thing, it's going to be by work performed, and these engineers and firms develop a knowledge for what they're looking at, and you will repeatedly use firms.
I understand it, but there's also people on the list that have never done work in our community, so how do we make sure on their list that they even qualify for, for a contract with us? How do we know their leader, how do we know their workmanship? How do we say, hey, this firm did a lousy job, they need to go? I mean, how do you justify? It's just like me at a, at a job management at a store, if I'm not doing a job, that, my boss is going to say, you ain't doing a good job, you hit the road. You know, I get valuation too. All I want to do is evaluate some other contractors, some, some of these other engineers, and give them some work here, for we know we can evaluate these engineer firms. If you keep awarding a contractor for every, every engineer, you might as well just hand a checkbook for one engineer firm and say, do all our projects. I don't want to go that route. I just don't want to go that route.
Alderman Wesley.
I, if this, if this engineer, this firm doesn't get approved, and we have to go to someone else, how long is, is it gonna, is it gonna tie up the project at all? How, how many weeks?
I guess it depends if I can get a proposal from a firm in time for when the packets go out for the next committee meeting.
Okay, because, because I, I feel that there's other firms out there too, like S, SEC and, and Wright Development, we don't know what they do, so, I'd like to give, look at them too, so.
Alderman Lewitin.
I think that maybe everybody's forgotten, except me, when I wrote the insurance requirements for the city of Wooddale, for the contracts, one of the forms I, I was, I wrote that should be signed, that was agreed upon as an option, didn't have to be used, but it was, it's called an experience letter. Every insurance company keeps a history of the claims that their client had. If we want to get a general idea of the work quality of the person, we write a letter to his insurance company for, or companies for the last five years, and ask for a claims experience, it's called an experience letter. And it's in our forms, it's in our ordinances, the form is there at the discretion of the city manager, he can delegate that authority to staff, that they can pull that out, fill it out, have it signed, send to the insurance company. State law says they must respond in 30 days, but my experience is that they mostly respond within a week, if not shorter. It's not going to give you 100% answer, whether this guy is good or bad, but it's, it's going to tell you, if the guy's got three claims in the last five years, he might have, he might have second thoughts about his work, especially if it was an E and O claim. That's all I have to say.
We've meandered from the motion that's in front of us, is shall we award a contract to Baxter and Woodman, the amount not to exceed 131? We've meandered into committee discussions as to future policies, as to whether the engineer, our city engineer picks the engineering firm, whether or not there's some kind of policy that we should set on rotating the engineering firms, whether we should be negotiating prices, all of that belongs in committee, and should be at the next Public Works Committee agenda, including the report as to how we've awarded these contracts over the last two years. But the motion before us is, shall we award the contract to Baxter and Woodman? Anything further on this question, Alderman Wesley?
No, I, I.
Anything further, roll call.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Cole?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
That passes? That conclude your report?
Yes, that's my report.
Finance Administration, Alderman Winger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance, adapting the annual budget 2010 through 2011 fiscal year.
I'll second it.
I think the motion was made by Alderman Winger as chairman, seconded by Alderman Coles. Anything further on the question? Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Cole?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
That passes ordinance O-10-2.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Wooddale to require a business to state whether a hazardous material is located on the business premises in an application for a business license.
Is there a second?
Say.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Lewitin?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley? Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Caddella?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Cole?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw?
Yes.
That passes ordinance O-10-3, that brings us back to other business, item four, deleted from the consent agenda, approval of MQ Construction School Street Reconstruction Project in the amount of $69,373. Before I entertain a motion to approve and/or table, so we can bring the attorney up to speed, Mr. Graff, would you give a brief summary that you did at committee?
Referring to the, with respect to that, some.
To the individual resident, yes.
Okay, this was a, a request from the resident of 152 School Street, who claimed their some pump line, some pump was running excessively since the project was done. We had the contractor come out and look at it, they dug up part of their front yard, identified the pipe, put an inlet on there to assure positive drainage of that pipe, and they rotted out the line to make sure it was clear, the resident has also been running a hose in there to make sure it was clear. I think what we were, what we've been looking at now, or what we're trying to look at with Public Works televising that some pump line, is to see if there's any blockage, or obstruction, or anything closer towards the house. I, I think we can say, without a doubt, or without a doubt in my mind, there's nothing that MQ Construction did to, to affect that line, because we can see the limits of their work, and that line was checked beyond that and known to be clear. So, if there's something further on up there, you know, we don't know what that is, we know it runs, because he's run a garden hose through it many times, which is why I personally haven't felt it was appropriate to hold up the final payment on this job, because I don't see that there's any, there's anything that MQ did that had, has any, has caused a problem out there one way or the other. So, we're still investigating what it is, and we'll certainly help the resident out any way we can to take care of this situation, but the house is offset quite a bit from, from the right-of-way, and the contractor did not do any work outside of the right-of-way, so there's a, there's a long length of pipe that's really nowhere near where they were working. So, we'll continue investigating it, but I would rather not hold up this final pay request.
Let me see if there's a motion on first, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Lewitin.
As you said, if your equipment was working, you could have given a definitive answer, you could have given a definitive answer to us tonight, of whether or not there was a relationship to, between the work and the problem. And if you would have said to us tonight, we ran the television in, and there's no obstruction, and make it completely clear that it couldn't be invoked, we wouldn't have any doubt left, and we would say, pay, pay, pay MQ. But there is a 1% doubt. Now, I don't believe that the damage would be $70,000. Could we reduce that, and then pay the rest off next pay, pay period, when we know it's not there, or use it to fix it? And I really, got to say, it's, you know, it's, I know it's not your fault, the, the equipment broke down, and your, your maintenance staff couldn't fix it on time, but we did have plenty of notice in advance of this meeting to get a definitive answer. So, I would like to ask you, what, what dollar amount could it possibly be, and then, could I have an amendment to reduce the holdback to whatever that is?
I can only give just a complete off-the-cuff guess at this point, but I can't imagine even replacing his entire foreign some pump line would cost more than maybe $5,000.
Would the, would the person who made the motion amended to pay off all but $5,000?
Alderman Lewitin, as much as I respect what you're trying to do here as the motioner, I, I won't change it. I, it's my technical opinion, and maybe I shouldn't use it as a council member, is, I don't see how this could have been the, the fault of the construction. So, I want to leave my, I want to leave my motion alone, I think it's inappropriate to pull the $5,000 out, but if there's five votes to, to vote it down and go the other way, I will certainly secede with a smile on my face.
Anything further, Alderman Coles?
They already checked the line in, all the work that they done, wherever they did the work, they checked, checked the line in, MQ did, they dug a hole, they put a pipe in there, they put something in there, and up to what they did, there was no blockages. Okay. Far as I'm concerned, that's all, that's all we were required to do. So, that's fine, like this.
Alderman, please.
The bottom line, we're voting, if we vote yes for this, before this check gets written, it's going to be two weeks, right? Is that correct?
I think it'll go out tomorrow.
Oh, it's.
Mr. Wilson.
It's on this list. Or it's on, it's on the list of bills tonight.
Actually, it's not on this list, the bills have already checked that. It's on the one that's being prepared to be sent out to you tomorrow for the sixth committee meeting. As we've done in the past, it'll be accompanied with a memo that unless we hear objection, otherwise, the bills will be mailed out. Now, hearing this, depending how the vote goes, we can certainly preemptively hold that check until such a check of that line has been conducted, if, if that's the direction the staff wants to go, or, excuse me, council wants staff to go.
So, in other words, well, bottom line, are we going to get a check before these checks get cut next Thursday, right? Is that when the checks are going to get cut?
Correct, they would go out Friday morning. That's what I'm saying, if, if the direction of the council is to approve it pending final check of the line after the televising truck gets fixed, we can do that, if that's not the motion, and we don't.
No, but we'll have an answer. We can pass it tonight, and, I don't know, maybe it's a question for Mr. Kramer.
I think we're entering into a dangerous present, it's either pass it tonight, or we don't. I think conditional pass, or pass with a condition.
Okay.
Up or down, yes or no? Anything further?